Hi kids.
Hello.
I think, well, I don't want to be totally certain. God, I have a lose weight.
I think the microphone is on, testing one.
I don't know if I'm muted.
I am not.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, is this the school committee meeting?
I think it is.
Okay, I'm confused, it says town hall.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're part of town, no, don't worry about it, I'm from the Council on Aging and we're, um, I think we're supposed to be speaking tonight, but we'll, we'll find out in a minute.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, wow.
So it recognizes APR and demonstrates collaboration, ongoing commitment to providing the highest quality of care to patients down within the community.
We're at seven oh eight.
I'd like to make a motion to the United States of America into the Republic of Ouija Saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate to justice.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read our minutes from our last meeting that we held on the twenty third of October? Yes, any changes? No, can I have a motion? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting ten twenty three twenty three. Do I have a second? I'll second that motion, all in favor. Okay, moving on, hello everybody, welcome. We are going to change the order of the agenda slightly, we are going to move item eight A under new business on council on aging as to the item that we will be discussing as special guests, hello Tony, it's nice to see you.
Good evening.
You have the floor.
Well, thank you, and, um, and thank you to the rest of the, uh, committee and to the principal and the superintendent for having me on, I see, uh, we also have Mary Minor and the chairwoman of the Council on Aging Board, Angela Bonin, are also signed in here. And I want to, uh, thank you for taking us out of order. And tonight, you know, really what I wanted to kind of do was uh, introduce and or update the committee on um, the Council on Aging Kitchen Project and, you know, where we've kind of uh, where our path has led us down, uh, through this process. And if, um, at any point, you know, you want to ask a question or stop me, uh, please do so. Um, essentially, you know, we started this, uh, started this process off by, uh, we're looking at the Council on Aging, the kitchen at the current Council on Aging in the Tiffany Room in the Town Hall. And it's, it's antiquated, it's, uh, out of date, it's in some, in some, uh, we have some code issues there, uh, it's, you know, desperately in need for an upgrade. Now, we received some funding through a CPC grant. We got some funding at town meeting through, uh, free cash appropriation. And we got some funding through, um, a state earmark similar to the one that we recently received for the school in the same type of, uh, format. And then there's also been some private fundraising, uh, through the friends of the Council on Aging as well. Uh, we've hired a, um, an engineer to assess, uh, the kitchen, its needs and, uh, and also look at what type of repairs, uh, would, would be necessary. Look at the appliances that we have, um, upgrades to the appliances uh, and remodel of the current kitchen. And through that process, we've come up with a conceptual, a conceptual design and we've shared with a, a, uh, construction estimator. Um, the construction estimate of that, uh, of that project came in, came in a little bit higher than expected. It's still just an estimate, um, but it kind of passed the threshold of that made us beg the question, you know, if we're going to be spending this much money on a kitchen renovation, should, should we be maybe looking at, um, a better way to improve the services that the Council on Aging provides? And there's some history with the COA looking at making a move over to the school. Um, looking at the, what's now the library, um, and potentially repurposing it into a, into a Council on Aging Center, uh, and combining the, that department with yours. So what, we've, uh, I've gone over to the school and taken a look at the space, uh, with Mary, uh, with our architect, we did some measuring, some measurements, and what I've, basically where we're at at this point is having them, uh, do the same thing, come up with a conceptual design and then a construction estimate. Um, very, very much in the exploratory phase right now. Uh, wanted to make sure we came to you and informed you of where we are in this process. Um, we're fully, fully unders- understand that, uh, if the school seems like a viable option, that it would require the support of the school committee. And before really kind of with everything else, I knew, I know how much has been on your plate over the last, uh, six months to a year now, uh, we felt like we wanted to get as much information and hard data as possible to bring to you before really, um, you know, putting pen to paper or anything like that. So right now, we're really in the, um, early, early, early stages of exploring a possibility. I'll say that the other benefit of another reason why we're looking at the school is, as you all know, the school is the town's emergency shelter in a si- in a scenario of, of, um, uh, forever, for, if we needed to activate a shelter, we would utilize the school as our location. You know, if it was a high heat situation, a flood situation, a, a bad winter storm, you know, or you know, for any reason, we might need to, uh, set up a, a shelter, uh, so if we did, um, venture down this road, uh, installing a kitchen in the space next to the cafeteria that would be able to serve, um, both programs and be utilized during an emergency situation like that, uh, would be another benefit for the town. Um, and for, for seniors and Council on Aging, if, if that was there, uh, if the COA did, uh, exist at the school and we did run into a shelter situation, it'd be a familiar location for them, uh, for them to utilize in that type of scenario as well. Um, so obviously we know there's a lot of, if we do go down this road, there's a lot, a lot of steps, um, to to take and there's a lot of discussion to be had, especially with, with the school and um, discussion about how the details would work and the programming and how they could overlap and what, what are the pros and cons and a number of different topics. Um, but before we got much further down the road on exploring, uh, the concept design slash costs, wanted to make sure you guys were aware that these conversations were happening. Um, and certainly didn't want to, uh, you know, wanted to make sure we came to you before it, uh, you know, came off as we were kind of stepping in front of you guys and, um, so I appreciate the opportunity to come and kind of give you a, a brief overview of, of what we're doing right now.
Thank you, that's very much appreciated, and, you know, I think it's great, first of all, that you're considering, you know, the school as a space for the Council on Aging. Of course, there's a lot of details to work out and money and logistics working, it saves the kids, it's lots to work out, but my opinion is just, I don't know.
I, I, I don't, you know, you, it's up to you as a committee, you don't even have to really like, um, uh, you know, go down that road quite yet, because like, I think the devil, the devils are in the details, so to speak, it's really going to come down to a lot of different things, um. But if we get, uh, a construction estimate that is so absurdly high that it's, you know, it's not even thinkable to make the switch to the school. Um, you know, that's a hurdle that we may not be able to overcome, if, if we get a construction estimate that is uh, competitive, especially compared to the construction estimate that we got for the Tiffany Room in the Town Hall, now it's worth something to explore further and have deeper discussion about. Um, so we're, again, we're really in that early, early stages and part of that construction estimate, you know, is also, um, what type of cost would be associated with, you know, mm, uh, building a library somewhere else in the tent, in the, in the school, right? Um, so, so, i- if there's any, if you have any questions about, um, you know, the specifics of what we're looking at, I don't, I think that our preliminary goal here related to the kitchen is to, uh, work out what a kitchen design would look like and potentially cost that could service not just the COA but also the schoolchildren. Uh, it does not, it, you know, not in an attempt to require that type of programming switch. Um, but you want to, if we go down this road, we certainly would like to have it as an option, and as I mentioned before, if we ever end up in a shelter, you know, needing to use that kitchen for shelter purposes, it'd be good to have the additional capacity as well. So what that really comes down to is, you know, the amount of refrigeration you might need, um, the amount of prep space you might need, things like that. Uh, we're pretty familiar, uh, with your current launch operation and what you currently offer to the, to the schoolchildren, and it seems like from, through the superintendent, Tony P., uh, it certainly seems like it's an extremely valuable program that's being run right now and it serves the children, uh, greatly. So we certainly don't want to put any pressure on any change there. But, uh, we didn't want to, um, we wanted to make sure that we were accounting for the possibility of, of alternatives, should the school committee want to explore that.
That makes sense, that, that sounds great, Tony, uh, your, a lot of the details are really helpful. Do you have like a timeline as to when you're really hoping to get things moving, I mean, I know you are looking at more of the estimates and but, you know, how, what are you looking at, are you looking to start in, within the next year or sooner or later, or are we talking five years out, two years out, a year out?
It, it would just be nice to know like how, how pressing the, uh, it, the information is for us, you know?
Um, I think that we're in the very early stages, like I said, uh, you know, Mary and Angela, I'm probably, they're probably cursing me, uh, even though they're on mute right now, hoping I'm sent, like, wanting it to be sooner than later. Um, the COA is in desperate need of an improved situation, they're so, the, they service, you know, around thirty to thirty-five seniors every day, every week. Uh, and the kitchen space is just so, so old and small and it just, they're in desperate need for, uh, an improved space. Um, and really just the Tiffany Room itself doesn't service, uh, or doesn't provide them enough space for the services they offer, they tend to also utilize the conference rooms in the Town Hall as well. So there, a- as their program grows, the, the urgency increases, uh, as far as trying to make some progress on this project. Uh, but, you know, there's the out, the factors of costs and procurement and, you know, working with the school on on how, how those details are, the programming, how it would work out, there's so much, um, so many different variables there that it's hard to put a timeframe on it right now. But I would imagine, you know, any type of project like this, we would want to, we'd want to try to time it up that it's, you know, occurring over the summer, when it's not, you know, not interrupting your school year, uh, so I don't think we're in a position to potentially be doing it this summer. Um, so I would say probably if we were to, if, if we were to go down that road, if it was, if all the stars aligned and we were going to make progress on moving over to the school, the earliest would be, would be the following summer.
Thanks.
Um, but again, there's so, uh, so many variables there, and we're really, really early in the stages.
Tony, I, um, conceptually, I think, um, this is a, is a great idea, the, the research behind multi-generational um, programming, you know, for, for both sides, for elders and for, for kids. It's pretty clear, like when it's a well-rounded program with a lot of intentionality in the work, so that makes the concept I'm really open to, I think, in addition to the timeline, you know, and the timeline that you just, and I know it's a rough timeline, but next, um, the summer of twenty five, we would be one year in with our new superintendent, um, and so I'm just thinking about, like, just, you're right, we have a lot on our plate as a school committee right now, but, you know, pretty major conversation just about numbers and, um, what the best thing to do is, that's a continuation of the conversation we have, we're going to be hiring superintendent um, this year, and I always like to say, like, whatever we don't know, right, it's, it's out there. So I think we've, it requires us to do some more too, being on the ball about our own timeline, with everything we've got to do. And so that's one, one pragmatic, um, piece, and then, um, the other is like, what would the cross-construction look like? I like that you're bringing up that there is two win-wins here, there's a a, a win for the seniors to have space, there could be a win in the school having a different and possibly better library situation. But we'd have to think as a school committee about where that would be, and we would need advice about that, um, from our administration here. Um, the other thing is the kitchen, I think that there is a place where, you know, regardless of what the lunch program is, that the kitchen offers such an interesting instructional tool. Um, and potentially one that could be, um, a, a source of collaboration between the generations there, so I appreciate that, that's exciting to me, certainly as a school committee member. I think that I want to think about, after the estimates come through, if they're viable, like you said, then I think, I would say to us, that we would have to sit down and really think through, we would have to do our own sort of, um, what kinds of things do we want to see here? Um, and what is the impact of having elders, there's a clear positive impact, right? And there's no negative, but it does, that I can see, but it does require some culture work. Like, there's some mindset shifting and cultural work that we would have to do as a school when it all of a sudden becomes another, it's, it's so, the school building is serving an additional purpose, right? So there's, um, it is a different thing when there are, is a pre-K to sixth grade, you know, elementary school running around with teachers and educators. And it's another when you also add in, um, the needs of, of a high-functioning, powerful, um, elder community, it's completely doable. And it requires some planning work, right, for everybody you're thinking of, because it's another thing to think about.
Yeah, and safety, of course, too.
And then safety, there'd be culture, there'd be noise.
Yeah.
Um, and there are disruptions and needs and all the kinds of things that happen in the school building, some of which are age-appropriate for a smaller crowd. Might be harder for a, uh, an older crowd, but we have a small enough daycare in the heart. And I think if anybody could pull that off, it would be us, right? But we would have to do, we're not going to, we might have to do some talking with some of the groups of students and parents, just about, like, there might, there would be some different things that we do because we have elders here, we want to treat them with respect, you know, and celebration, so I just, we should have a period of time where we think of all the different things that this might impact so that we can make a good plan, so my thing, don't read any of this as being, um, uh, against it or a cautionary tale, it is just if we, if we end up deciding to do this, which, you know, feels like the temperature is pretty warm, it is for me. Just, I want to make sure we plan it well and we get the double wins, like Tony brought out, Tony, right, Tony brought up, and, um, uh, and, um, just really be thoughtful about it.
Yeah, I love this thing.
And, um, and, and I may not have, you know, been clear about it on, you know, the, in our preliminary discussions, uh, that the seniors would dine in the li- you know, what's today, the library, if it gets, if we were to go down this road and convert it to a Council on Aging Room, uh, they would actually dine there, they wouldn't be, you know, taking dining space up in the cafeteria, even though the kitchen would be over there in that side room. So you wouldn't have to worry about, um, you know, uh, ability to, you know, see not only the schoolchildren but also seniors in the cafeteria, they would still Not only the schoolchildren, but also seniors in the cafeteria, they would still dine separately. But the, you know, the, there would be some uh, overlap of use of space of the kitchen area itself. Certainly, you know, like I said, the programming and the development of that and having some shared meals or. You know, being able to invite this, the council on aging, uh, visitors to. Uh, plays or events or, you know, whatever other program you guys are having in the, in the school, you know, that. That, uh, those possibilities are endless. Um, but we, when looking at this. We tried to approach it as, you know, how could we go down this road without? Uh, you know, interfering with the standard, like the typical day-to-day activities that currently occur at the school. We're trying to keep that, tried to keep that in mind.
I'm confident that we can all be happy and make it all work. It all, it all comes down to planning and obviously budgets.
So the next, so the next step is a, um, you know, high-level conceptual design. Uh, that can be shared with a construction estimator. Um. Before it goes to a construction estimator, uh, myself and the council on aging is going to review that design. Um, I could also sit down with a member of the school committee and or the superintendent. And uh, take a look at it at that time as well to make sure that, you know, uh. Before going to a construction estimator that, you know, like must-haves are included in that design. Um, if that, that might make the most sense for the next step.
So a lot of parking, it's. Well, that all goes back to what you said, in terms of parking that's needed and we have. Two fairly small lots, the side and that side. And I really have no idea what kind of traffic.
Madam Chair, if I may, Tony, uh, you and I talked once about a, a townwide traffic flow study. Uh, and I don't know where that is, but obviously this possibility would be a, a part of that, I would hope.
Uh, without a doubt, if, if we were to, um. Go down this road, uh, some sort of traffic study, parking study specific to this property. Would be part of that process. Um, the nice thing about where the library is. Is that it has its own separate entrance, uh, so it doesn't, it, you know. Usually, uh, the council on, the guests of the council on aging aren't showing up. To the Tiffany room until late morning, so after your, the school day is already started. Uh, so it wouldn't interfere with, um, your typical pickup and drop-off schedules. Uh, of the school day. Um. And. There's, you know, most, a decent amount get picked up. Uh, there's not a lot of parking that, you know, a lot of parking needs that come. There certainly is some, but I've talked to. The engineer about including some site work on that side of the building. Uh, specifically for, you know, the entrance and or, um. The council on aging van, you know, handicap access to that side, so, uh. That would be expanded to factor in, you know, additional needs for parking. And I know there's pre-existing needs for a traffic study and traffic flow around the building anyways, so. Um, that would definitely be, it would, we would try to hit all of those pieces with this. And even if we don't, uh, even if we don't pursue the council on aging shifting over to the school. Uh, Tony and I have talked a lot about the need for a traffic study, uh, around the, around the. The school building anyways, so, um, this would, it'd be nice to be able to do it all at the same time. Cause there's, there would be a new impact, but, um. I think that's something that we're probably gonna take on in the, in the near future anyways. Regardless of what happens with COA.
Thank you.
Again, of course, that's up, that's a, it's a school, school committee would be part of that discussion before pursuing it.
So in terms of your next steps, how soon are you looking to? Move? All right, are we talking next week, a month from now, two months from now?
Um, as far as like putting together the conceptual design, uh. The architect's ready to. Start working on that now. They've already come out and taken measurements and have heard from. This council on aging, myself, about what their needs are. They also heard, uh, you know, what. The amount of schoolchildren that are currently served by your, your lunch program. Um, and so they have all the information. Next step is for them to kind of put some pen to paper, come up with a conceptual design. And then run it by us before sending it off to a construction estimator. So, um, I'm gonna have him get started on that. Uh, he, I spoke to him the other day and he was going to give me a, uh. A timeframe, but hasn't given one to me yet. I don't know if it's gonna take him a month. Or a few weeks or, you know, longer. Um, so I don't know how long it'll take him to put together a conceptual design, but that can get started immediately.
Very helpful. Wasn't happy to help. I'm, I'm sure, I don't wanna speak for Tony, but I know he's happy to help.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Madam Chair, I think something else, uh, that Tony, um. Kind of started at the end with the library. But I have walked through the building on multiple occasions with representatives of the council on aging. We didn't just decide, you know, right away the library is where it's gonna be. We looked at this side of the building, uh, taking the, a couple of classrooms here. Uh, and it just seemed like after discussions on multiple issues, um. With the senior citizens to avoid, you know, the long hallways, the ramps. Uh, as much as possible. Um. The big thing at the library is gonna be the. Cost of an installation of a fully functioning handicapped accessible bathroom. Because there isn't one down at that end. Um. And, uh, everything else would have been on its, you know, the second floor. Or on the first floor, way down the other end of the building, which didn't make any sense, so. The library being the potential place, um, was really the end product, not the beginning product. And I just wanted the school committee to, uh, to be aware that. You know, a lot of discussion has gone into saying that that's probably the best place.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. So a lot of children's traffic out that door, that before recess.
Sorry, Cassandra, um, the meeting is not a, a public. Meeting for, for comments, it's a meeting in public, so, um, I apologize that if you could family until. You need to correspond to properly state your name and, um, comments you make out.
Is there anything?
No, I just, thank you, Tony, for mentioning that. Um, yeah, there, I, I would just reiterate, you know, uh. Where, even though, uh, like Tony said, that was the product of a lot of discussion and, you know, overview and. Tours and, um. It's, we're still very, very much in the early, early phases here and, you know, for me, it was. Our first goal was to. Complete this project as a renovation to the kitchen at the Tiffany room. And when that project started to, uh, look like it was gonna. Potentially be more than what we were expecting to spend, it really started to beg the question of if we're gonna invest this much into the council on aging. You know, maybe we should be thinking about investing it into a space that's gonna better serve them and potentially better serve the school. Um, and really, you know, kind of look at it from that perspective. But we wanna see, we wanna go through the same process of getting a construction estimate. So this way, we're comparing options, uh, you know, on an equal level. Um. Then, if those comparisons, uh, if the, if that. Effort turns out to say, hey, this is worth looking further into, potentially going to the school. That's when we'll get into like those deeper discussions before we do anything. Uh, further about how it would fit in well with the school and the current programming there and make sure that, you know. Uh, it's not, um, you know, dis-servicing any of the existing services that are there, so. More to come and I'll, I will, uh, reach out, I'll talk to Tony about, um. You know, reviewing the conceptual plan before going to construction estimator.
Sounds like you have a plan. Thank you. Looking forward to hearing the next steps, once you have a little bit more.
All right. Thank you again so much for taking us out of order.
Oh my gosh, our pleasure, but feel free to stay.
I, I, I gotta help put some children to sleep. But enjoy the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.